Good evening everybody. Thank you for coming out. Today's April Board of Education meeting. Before we call this order, we are going to make a little bit of an addendum to the presentation for tonight. After the Pledge of Allegiance, we are going to do our presentation for our service members and all that good stuff. So Carrie, when you are ready, can you call this meeting to order?
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkemeyer.
Yes.
Ms. McKnight.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Stamm.
Yes.
Can we all rise saying Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance in reply of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, you have the floor.
Yes. Okay, we are going to move over to our presentations that we have for tonight. We have some very important people here and people that we are very appreciative to have a part of our district. I would like to begin by calling Martha Rothie from OSBA to the front, and she's going to present our schools that are being recognized again. Their Purple Star honor is being renewed, so if you could just share a little bit about yourself and the program and...
I don't normally have a podium. This is very fancy. Thank you, thank you. My name is Marty Rothie, and I'm the Northwest Region Manager of the Ohio School Boards Association. And the first and most important thing that I want to do tonight is thank these five people right here. Thank you for representing your students in your district. It's not an easy job, and I know you have highs and you have lows, but you have put yourself out there to represent the students and the families in Anthony Wayne local schools. So thank you for doing that. Secondly, I passed out a sheet of paper that tells a little bit about our Northwest region of Ohio. We are made up of 20 counties and 143 school districts, and I am the liaison person to those particular school boards and districts. We are a school board-run organization. Our president this year is Cindy Erickson from Putnam County ESC. Our president-elect is Jan Buzzdecker from Woodmore Local, and our past president is Bob Vasquez from Toledo City. We are run by an executive committee, and I would like to say that Mr. Stam is a member of our executive committee. So your school board is actually represented on the Northwest Region Board. So congratulations and thank you, Mike. The other part of this packet that I gave you, we have special awards in our region, and I would like to encourage you, if you have individuals in your region or your district who fit any of these criteria of excellence in community service, humanitarian, an excellence award for outstanding leadership, please, please nominate them. We highlight them at our regional conference. Our Fall Regional Conference is right in your neck of the woods in Perrysburg on October 13th. The, I'm sorry, it's October 2nd. The back is the nomination form. It's short and sweet. I would encourage you to do that. The main reason I'm here tonight, the Purple Star Award. The Purple Star Award is given annually by the Ohio Department of Education to schools that show a significant commitment to serving students and families connected to our nation's armed forces. In 2024, 97 schools received the esteemed award for the first time, and 74 schools earned a renewal after three years as dedicated Purple Star schools. The Northwest Region is proud to announce there were three individual schools, and that is unusual for a district, from Anthony Wayne Local. I am here tonight to present a certificate on behalf of Fallen Timbers Middle School, Anthony Wayne Local Schools, Lucas County. The second certificate is for Anthony Wayne High School, Anthony Wayne Local Schools, Lucas County. Congratulations. And the third certificate is for Waterville Primary School, Anthony Wayne Local Schools, Lucas County. Congratulations.
Can we also get a picture? And so, and Matt and Jamie, if you'd like to join also, that'd be wonderful.
Congratulations to all the teachers and students.
Thank you. We're very, very proud that all six of our school buildings are recognized as Purple Star schools. They support our students a great deal, and that is what we have up next. We have Christine Young. She's in charge of our overall for our district, the Purple Star program, and has several individuals from each building that assist her with that, but would like her to do a presentation at this time that talks a little bit about what we do across the district to support our military families.
I said you're my clicker?
I have it, Christine.
I know, I was just wondering who's doing my clicking. Yeah, okay. All right, hi. Oh, yay, look at that. Okay, thank you. All right. Hi, yes, I'm Christine Young. So I started this program, I said, for the junior high, but I also hold a special role in the state. So I am also part of our MIC-III Council, which MIC-III stands for Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission. So that's a mouthful. And that is a federal compact. It's actually one of the few federal compacts that is honored by all 50 states, all right? And so that's where the Purple Star in Ohio actually originated from, all right? The Purple Star designation was a grassroots effort in Ohio, started by Mr. Pete Lupeba, who is our MIC-III Commissioner, who felt that we should recognize districts who have gone above and beyond, but not just districts, but individual school buildings, who really spend time to make sure that these military students are military-connected, youth are supported, and that families are supported. All right, so I'm going to kind of give you an overview of what our district does, and then I'm going to ask some of our building liaisons to come up and talk specific about the programs that they do in their buildings. All right, so as I said, we are all six, as Mr. Herman said, is all six of our buildings have that honor of being a Purple Star designation, all right? All of our buildings have also renewed some multiple times, all right, as well, and we take this, all right, to heart, especially because we are so close to two bases, the 983rd Army Reserves as well as the 180th, you know, Air National Guard as well. But we have families that are from all different branches. We have Coast Guard, you know, from Toledo. We have Navy that have people have come all the way from Chicago, and they live here, and they transfer back and forth, all right? But we also have families that are moving in, all right? Ohio actually has the most veteran families that are coming back here, all right? It's a great place to live, all right? At least, I'm totally biased. Granted, I grew up in Anthony Wayne, and I graduated from Anthony Wayne, and now I live here, all right? So, but we have a lot to offer for veteran households and veteran families as well, all right? So our district also includes not only our military families, but we include our veterans. So that's active duty, guard and reserve, but we also include our veteran households as well as our Gold Star families, all right, and as well as those that have siblings who are serving as well. So we try to encompass a whole broad spectrum of what it means to be military-connected at Anthony Wayne. All right, so as I said, we do a few things. I kind of just have some pictures, all right, of things that we've done. So every fall, we organize a Military Appreciation Night at our fall football game, where we have, we borrow a large court-size flag from BGSU, all right, and our military families are honored out on the field during that pre-game show. And then recently, we just had our first bingo night for our family members. It was lots of fun. Mackenzie was there, or the DeGraces were there. It was awesome, okay? It was a good night, and we got to use the actual bingo board at the Legion with the numbers and everything, all right? Calling it out, and I'll say by the end of the night, it was awesome because when my son was the bingo caller, and at the end of the night, he'd be like, "B-60," and the whole room would be like, "B-60." You know, it was awesome. So it was a great time, and we plan on having some more events for our family. But I want to start with Waterville Primary. They were the first to really take this initiative and start the ball rolling and really set the bar high, which I really appreciated, and I've stolen a lot from them from my program. So I'm going to welcome up the Purple Star Liaisons from Waterville. I would love to invite our Waterville Purple Star kids up with us. Come on now. So Waterville Primary was first designated as a Purple Star school in 2018. We have Purple Star students from kindergarten all the way until fourth grade. We average about 30 students per school year. We've got two lovely girls up here that are part of our Purple Star program, and Mrs. Cowell is going to talk about all of the amazing things that we do. All right, hi, everyone. So these are just a couple of our Purple Star Generals at Waterville. We have this year 35 Purple Star Generals, so military-connected students. We've had to split the group up a little bit because the meetings were getting a little too big to be super productive, so it was a really, a really awesome problem for us to have. And we've had, I feel like for the really the first time this year, kids requesting, even kids that have like grandparents that served in the military, or uncles, or just people that are kind of related to them by extension, but they still really care about and respect. So we have a very active Purple Star group. They have tons of ideas of how to support the military and kind of, they come up with ideas of service projects, and then also what they really like to do, right, girls, is educate other kids, other students at our elementary school about the jobs and responsibilities of military members. There's a lot of words up on the screen right now that describe Waterville's participation in Purple Star Generals. Basically, we, last year, Christine hosted a MIC-III meeting at the junior high, which we participated in, and we also hosted them. They had a visit at Waterville Primary. So they got to come and meet with our third and fourth grade Purple Star Generals themselves. We worked together to prepare some questions to ask for them. Our group of kids had some really great thoughtful questions, and we learned a lot from their visit. We also made a video of the different things or events that our Purple Star Generals are responsible for, which we're going to show for you once Mrs. Aller is done. And this was specifically made it for last year, so we've kind of moved on from there. But we have meetings at least each quarter, more like, probably a couple times every quarter, to plan with our students and then implement projects throughout the school and even into the community also. This picture is from a couple years ago. We worked with a local builder, Doug Howland Building, and they built a house and then auctioned it, and all of the proceeds, the house was entirely built on donations, all of the proceeds were then donated to Folds of Honor Organization, and our Purple Star Generals fundraised and earned enough money with the junior high, Purple Star Generals too, we teamed up on it, to purchase a flag pool and a flag. And then we went out on the last day of school that year and had a flag-raising ceremony and planted flowers around the flag pools. It was, it was pretty exciting. This is what, that's what you're looking at right up there. So I'm going to show, Mrs. Aller, do you have anything else, or did I get it all? No? Yeah? So we're going to show the video that we played for MIC-III, and thank you guys so much for all your support. While we're figuring the sound out, I'm going to, I'm going to give you a warning. We have student voices in here with some background music too, so they're pretty clear for the most part, but there was one little area where I forgot to turn the music down, so it might be a little tricky to hear that part.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ Doug Howard, to help motivate the organization. Both of our scholarships, they remember, and it's proud of all the single children. And Doug Howard, when he decided, designed and built a house in Waterville, donations only. Their goal was to sell the house and donate all proceeds from the sales. The goals of our family were about this project. We knew we wanted to help. If children had to brainstorm, we came up with a plan that ended up working. Purple Star generals from Waterville Primary came up with Purple Star generals from Anthony Wayne Junior High School to fundraise and help fund a circus flag pool named In American Black, being installed at the old owner's house. Once the flag pool was installed, our Purple Star generals played a special flag raising ceremony, which took place on the last day of this whole year. Along with raised schools of flags, we also planted flowers with flowerbeds around the flagpole. We love the opportunities, our communities to run with, and it is a global organization. Thank you for taking the time to learn what we do as Purple Star generals at Waterville Primary School. We would love any new ideas that you may have that may help us to educate others about the United States military, share our appreciation to our military members, and serve our community.
All right, I'm going to present on our next two primary buildings. All right, so White House Primary was first awarded in 2018. They have approximately fifteen families that are part of their military-connected group. They actually are hosting this Wednesday their first-ever Military Family Night with some dodgeball. All right, I was like, oh, I'm like, that's going to get interesting. I was like, especially when it's parents versus kids. All right, so they're setting up and trying to plan for that. So some of the things that they've done with their liaisons is they always spend time going and visiting the Veterans Memorial Park in White House. All right, they do a special little walking field trip to talk about the different branches, learn about the military, and that's a building-wide effort. And then they spend, especially again, April is the month of the military child. They plan a family event again every year. So this one again is their first dodgeball event, is the major theme. All right, so that's some of the things that they do. And then they also help to organize, again specifically, sorry, with our Military Family Night that we do in the fall as well. All right, do we have any of our White House kids up? Want to come up? I was like, come on. So you're going to come back here. Run with me. I was like, get our exercise. All right, Delino, right? That's you. There you go. And your treat bag. You gotta get the candy, too. Okay. Oh, there he is. I was like, yeah, I was like, where are you coming? Thank you. There you go, Mark. All right, and also your treat bag. All right? Okay, let's stand up front and recognize you, okay? So here's two of our White House Purple Star generals. Let's give them a round of applause. So our local heroes. So thank you, gentlemen. I know, it's embarrassing. We are going to get a group picture at the end, just a fair warning. All right, you can take your seats now. Thank you. Awesome. Okay. All right, next is Monclova Primary. All right, they were first awarded in 2018 and then renewed again in 2022. All right, so as I said, all of our buildings at this point have had at least one renewal or on to their second as well. So Chris Bierer is their purple liaison. All right, so he does do a lunch group or a lunch bunch with them as well. So very similar to Waterville's program where they pull them. He tries to do it quarterly, if not once a month, to be able to meet and talk with the kids and see how things are going. And they also spend time on doing activities, organizing things for Veterans Day, April, month of the military child as well. But again, encouraging and educating individuals on the military and how we can support our kids as well. So they always participate in our Month of the Military. The state of Ohio does our Month of the Military Family Spirit Week. So I know our primary buildings are doing it this week because of testing, and the high school and the junior high, we're doing it next week with the state. So Tuesday, April fifteenth, is our Purple Up Days across the state of Ohio. So make sure we're purple on that day. All right, that's also the National Purple Up Day. Does anyone know why the color purple is the color of the military kid? A little trivia on the side here. Got to add that in for teachers. Yes. Does anyone know? Yes. Oh, good try. It's all the colors of the flag, all blended together. All right, make purple. All right, so that's the color that they have chosen for the Purple Star designation. All right, and so that's why we always have our Purple Up Day. Again, some of the other things that they do, as I said, so it's Veterans Day. They always do a nice program, welcoming veterans into their school, educating about the special needs of military-connected youth. And do we have any Monclova kids? I don't think we did. But let's give them a round of applause, even though they're not here. So here's some of the different projects that they have done. All right, so you'll see they make cards, thank you cards. And again, they have veteran speakers come in and also have, again, some nice little crafts. I was like, the elementarys is so cute when you see all their cutie things. All right, Fallen Timbers.
Thank you for having me, Fallen Timbers. Kids, if you want to come up here, but if you're embarrassed, you don't need to. Good job, guys. We have a great group of kids at Fallen Timbers to represent us. We were first awarded the designation in 2020, and then we renewed last year in 2024. At Fallen Timbers, we have between fifty and thirty students each year that are in our Purple Star families. We, at Fallen Timber School, we recognize and are honored to have a large population of military families residing in our district. We see this population as a resource for all of us, for our students, for our whole student body, not just our Purple Star generals. It's an opportunity to form strong bonds with our community and to honor our military. At Fallen Timbers, we focus on providing all students with basic knowledge of opportunities and careers as being a part of the military. We do that through our Veterans Day program. We do a, what's called Lunch and Learn, and quite a few of you have volunteered for me, which we really appreciate. You guys did a great job. And as a part of that program, we want to teach our kids about the different opportunities that our military can provide them in their futures. We educate our students about empathy for our Purple Star families and what our students need. We provide our staff with professional development, specifically on students in the military. We provide opportunities for our Purple Star students to be leaders in our school and to give tours and volunteer to take some of our speakers to the different areas that they are supposed to be in when they come to our school. Our counselors build relationships with our personal Purple Star families so that there's open line of communication between all of us, and we know what is going on in their families and what they need from us. At Fallen Timbers, our counselors and staff have close relationships with our Purple Star families. We feel that open communication about the needs of our student may bring the most positive impact for our students. And I just put one specific example that happened within the last year. We had a student that their mom was deployed overseas. And we knew that this was happening because obviously, you know, we had communication with the family. But our student started having a little bit of problems here and there and was like very tired throughout the day. So when we talked to them and talked to their families, we recognized that they were staying up later to talk to their mom because of the time change. And so we were able to make a time during the student's school day where he could talk to his mom for a half an hour. And it was less stressful for the mom, obviously, and for the child because, you know, either one was waking up really early or going to bed really late. And we were able to make it a time when the mom was not actively working. So that was just one example of things that we can do for our students if they need that support. And that is all for Fallen Timbers. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
And I have one of my junior high Purple Star. Ava, if you could come up. So I've got to get that, drop the treat bag, sorry. Ava's like, great, I'm the only one here. We actually have twenty-five plus in our program at the junior high. But you know how kids, as they get older, have a lot of activities. All right, so as I said, we do, we call, we stole our name from Waterville Purple Star Generals Club, and we meet quarterly during home base time. So our home base is once a week on Wednesdays in the morning, so for the rest of the class. So our next meeting is actually next week during our Military Families Appreciation Week. So some of the things that we have done, we participate every year in the Hundred and Eightieth Trunker Treat. All right, I have volunteers from our Purple Star that come. And we always decorate our trunk, you know, have a good old time. I will say, every year I'm disappointed that we don't win the best trunk. Waterville participated with us this year, and it was great weather. Sometimes it's rainy, sometimes it was one year it was snowing, sleeting. But it's always a blast. All right, and then we also do a Veteran Appreciation Breakfast. We tend to do that. We didn't do it this year just because of the way veterans program worked out this year. But we always invite, every single student has an opportunity to bring a veteran that they know and their family to breakfast and just sit down early in the morning and just make some connections. All right, and then we do M&amp;M deployment jars. All right, so I've done this in the past where each family, when they have a deployment, that I should say that they make me aware of, gets an M&amp;M jar. So each M&amp;M represents a day that they're gone. So it's supposed to be a countdown. So every day you eat an M&amp;M, all right, as a way to kind of remember and, you know, kind of say a little blessing, you know, and then, you know, kind of count down and watch the jar, you know, get lower and lower. So as we, Waterville mentioned, we hosted the Ohio MIC-III meeting last spring. All right, thank you to Mr. Thistle Fever for helping organize that as well. It was some tech issues, as always. And then last May, we took a field trip to the Hundred and Eightieth Base, which was amazing. We're organizing to do that again this year and hopefully maybe get some of the other buildings and make it a little bit bigger as well. We're trying. We'll see what we can do. We had just missed the ability to go on the tarmac and actually watch them. So we saw them pull out, but we didn't get to actually like feel the vibrations of them shaking. That was pretty cool, though. So we got to see all about their equipment, you know, learn about the different intricacies. But we also spent a lot of time at the junior high talking more about what they could do, you know, in terms of coming up, if they're interested in, you know, following the footsteps of their family members and joining the military. This next week, we're actually going to have the Civil Air Patrol come out and do a presentation on their leadership program as well. We've had people from the colleges come and present to talk about how they can utilize their military family benefits in terms of education. All right, so we tried to make sure they can think of a little bit broader in terms of how it can affect them. All right, and then we have various speakers, as I said. So some of our pictures, our Veterans Day, again, the one in the center there is us in the hangar with the field trip, our veterans breakfast. Up here in the upper right is actually Tammy Puff, who's from Honorable Governor Mike Dwyane's office that was handing us a proclamation honoring our building for hosting. And then that's one of our trunk or treats. So, yeah. Thank you, Ava. I'm so embarrassed. And then finally, to wrap it up before we're going to get a whole group picture here, is our high school program. All right, so they were first designated in 2018, if you notice there's a repeat. All right, a lot of our buildings came kind of right at the same time. But they also, again, spend a lot more time on, obviously, Veterans Day and then April with their Month of the Military Child. They do kind of like the junior high, they try to meet, all right, at least quarterly. It is a little bit harder at the high school, you know, to meet just because there are so many different activities to be able to pull them from that. And they always participate in our Spirit Week. So some of the things that they wanted to highlight is last year, they had nineteen ninety-eight Anthony Wayne graduate Jason Graven, who was an Army veteran. He was one of the first to actually be in Iraq after the towers went down. And he came in, was a guest speaker at their Veterans Day, and it was a really good speech. He more or less tried to focus on, did he think he was going to go into the military? No, but it was a way to kind of get some structure in his life and how it really has brought him huge dividends in the end of serving and how it changed him as a person. And then this year, the junior high and the high school joined together and had a two-building assembly for their Veterans Day program. All right, and Rebecca Alm actually came and was the guest speaker and her husband, which was amazing. All right, they did a great job with that program as well. And there's some of the pictures that they had from, again, the Veterans Day Assembly. And then they also had veterans come and speak in their classrooms individually, to talk about their individual experiences. So overall, that is our program here at Anthony Wayne Junior High. Could I have the kids come up? We'll get a group picture.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
We do not want Carrie in the background, so let's.
So you want us to stand up?
No.
Hold up. I'll duck underneath.
Sure. Absolutely.
I know, buddy.
We all feel that way.
Thing we always say at the MIC-III meetings is we always say that, you know, kids are drafted, right? They don't choose to serve, but they serve right along their parents, and they go through just as many struggles as someone who is on the front lines. And so we always want to make sure we take a special moment and just remember that, that they don't have a choice, right, and they serve with their full heart as well. So thank you to you all.
We do want to thank Mrs. Young and actually all of the liaisons, building liaisons that help, and administrators, teachers, and all, you know, work very hard to make sure that all of our students' individual needs are met and that they feel supported through the district. And so we are proud to have our military families, and we are proud to be able to support them in the way that we do. So thank you. We know that you probably are not that interested in the rest of the business part of the meeting. So if you would like to leave at this time, you're welcome to. But we do thank you for taking the time to come tonight, and we do thank all of you for your service.
Thank you.
Do you know that little guy?
No. No, no.
I saw a twenty-dollar bill slip in the hand there.
They are great kids.
Absolutely.
This is what makes everything good. Yes.
Awesome. Thank you for the rest of you who stayed. A little slimmer. All right. Well, we'll move on to the second item on our agenda is the approval and signing of the Board of Education Minutes from last month. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, changes from last month? If not, any to motion to approve? Shelley motions? Do I have a second? Mike seconds. I saw his finger lift up.
I will second.
I got you.
Carrie, when you are ready.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkemeyer.
Yes.
Ms. McKnight.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Stamm.
Yes.
All right, item number three, Carrie, your treasure report.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is to approve the March 2025 financials as presented. Excuse me. Second item on the agenda is to approve the donation as listed. This is twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant that I believe Jamie did apply for and was awarded for that. Under item C is to... Under item C is to authorize the treasurer, or excuse me, to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of real estate purchase contract and all, and execute all documents related to the closing of the property located at 6446 North Texas Street in White House. This is number three or four of these properties that we have been purchasing with redoing White House primary and then trying to get that extra property. I think we're down to having one left, maybe. So I asked that the board approve that. This is a PI purchase and the cost of this was $104,000. So I do have the closing scheduled for tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. Under item D is to authorize the treasurer to make the necessary account modifications between now and June 30th. Hard to believe that that's on our radar already. But this is something you approve each month, but as we get closer to the end of the year, things get a little bit more cumbersome, so I authorize you to start, authorize me to start making those modifications now. Then under item E, D, excuse me, E, F, and G. These are three items that are going to be our PI projects. And it's taken some time to get these together as far as determining the priority, the funding. These were part of the levy that was failed initially in 2023. And what you are doing tonight is just authorizing us to seek bids for these projects. And I think we have discussed each of these a little bit from when the Building and Grounds Committee first met. But we are getting these three and then under item H, I'm going to add this in, would be to approve the design agreement with Trane. And that is so they can design another project or the engineering for another project, and that would be the Waterville Chiller and Boiler Replacement. And last month, you approved the track. So you can see Neil's going to be very busy this summer. Probably going to be spending a lot of money, but these projects are going to take time. But due to the timing of the projects, that's why we're doing so much. We try and do things during the summer when kids aren't in school, when the building people have access to all parts of the building without interruption, interrupting the day. So.
And again, all of these, all of these are out of permanent improvement dollars. They are not general fund dollars being used for these projects.
Right. And then, and I had a perfectly fine voice today. I have no idea what happened when I went home. So I do apologize for that. Then I did want to share, that was the last item on the agenda. So I did want to share, just last month, I updated the board on what was going on with the next biennium budget. So at the last meeting, I shared that the governor had released his proposed budget. I believe it was House Bill 96. And we operate on a two-year biennium budget. So our last biennium budget was for fiscal year '24 and '25, so that will be expiring June 30th. And with that last budget process, they implemented what they call the Fair School Funding Plan. It was the first time in probably 25, 28 years that we had a funding formula adopted and in place since, like, before Duroff. So with that, there were some changes, but I just shared some of the updates and explained that. He, you know, was proposing that they continue funding the plan. However, they did not update all the components, so it was an imbalance. And, but we were in the second quarter of a four-quarter game, so we knew more to come. Well, more has came, and the House has now put out their proposal. And this has more of an impact, not so much for Anthony Wayne right now, but it has more of an impact overall because we will no longer have, one of the biggest things with this, well, there's two big things, is they do not want to fund the fair school funding anymore. So knowing from the rhyme and reason behind the fair school funding plan, now we're back to the history, way back where we really don't understand how the funding works. With the House proposal, a lot of districts get more money. And with, with the governor's budget, Anthony Wayne was losing basically $17,000 to $18,000 over the two years. That's what was out there. With the House budget, Anthony Wayne gains like $100,000 in the next two years. All well and good. However, we don't know what's going to happen long-term with that. And the other big, big variable is they have also implemented a substitute bill that districts can only carry over 25% of a cash balance on June 30th based on your general fund expenditures. So for instance, if your expenditures, like our expenditures were $47 million, we carried over $2,600,000. We carried over 4.2% was our ending cash balance. There are districts near us in Wood, in Perrysburg, that would have to re, have, pay back or have, what's going to happen, this is what's going to happen, this is the interesting part. You're going to have to submit your five-year forecast now, which they're contemplating making it a three-year forecast, to the Budget Commission of your local county. And if that difference of that 25%, the Budget Commission is going to reduce your millage so you don't collect the funds. Now, those are funds that voters have approved to be paid to that school. And now you have legislation saying that if you have more than a 25% June 30th cash balance, that money will be deducted. You won't get that money the next year. It's just, it's crazy, it's upsetting. It's, it's probably the worst time for treasurers to have a conference, which is this week, because everybody is just irritable. But again, last month, we were in second quarter. Now we're in the third quarter. The budget will not be signed until June 30th. That's when it has to be signed. Rare that an exception is, takes place, but, you know, there's just a lot of spite and hate going on. It seems like the two legislators that are leading the House bill are Huffman and Stewart. And there's just some nasty comments being made. So it's, it's just upsetting a lot of people. And the people that worked to put the fair school funding in place consisted of two legislators, treasurer's superintendents, OSBA, OASBO, and BASSA all worked together to develop this. So it is disheartening and we do hope that things change. It doesn't have an impact like it does in our neighboring school districts on Anthony Wayne. Like I said, we would be one of the districts that would benefit, but that's, there's no, I have nothing after that. I have no way of figuring out, you know, that our revenue should stay relatively comparable based on our student count, our wealth, our median income, and all those variables, so.
And again, that's because we have a low carryover. You know, as Carrie stated, if they're, your general fund expenditures, if you, your carryover is 25% of that or more, that is when they can take action in order to reduce taxes and to, because they're concerned about the carryovers that some schools, you know, have. But the benefit to us is that we are, you know, on kind of a double-edged sword. We don't have a large carryover.
There's 500, of the 612 schools in the state of Ohio, 526 schools have more than a 25% carryover. We are one of 16 schools that have less than a 10% carryover. It's bittersweet. It's never been something that I've slept well at night knowing, but, and people have actually reached out and said, how do you sleep at night with that kind of cash balance? The other problem is, is they're looking at a June 30th cash balance. Now, June 30th, you can either be at a peak or an all-time low on your cash balance because the block, you know, we get roughly 70% of our revenue comes from local taxes. While I get taxes in February through April, and then I get taxes in usually end of July through September. So, you know, July payroll is a struggle. We ended last year with less than two payrolls. So. But third quarter, we got a fourth quarter, maybe even an OT. Keeping our fingers crossed, but just so you know, the impact on Anthony Wayne. But it is a great hardship for many school districts to be learning this information, so.
And all of the organizations and so forth are, you know, advocating and giving testimony and so forth to try to explain, you know, why, you know, doing these things differently, you know, how they can be damaging to the different districts. And also as far as preparing for the future and planning for the future without having, you know, a way of determining what amount you're going to bring in. That's a concern as well that they're advocating against.
The last thing I'll add on top of all that, as if that wasn't enough, but they are looking at changing the 20 mil floor as well. So I, you know, obviously, for the first time, Anthony Wayne has hit the 20 mil floor. So I, I'm not sure how that's going to impact anything, but like I said, we'll just hope we get through the next couple of months with better news, so. But with all that, of course, I did mention about scheduling a work session and I wondered if the 17th or the 22nd was good at 7:30. I did get more responses, I think, for the 22nd. Seven, yeah, it would be April 17th, which is a Thursday, next Thursday, a week from this Thursday, or Tuesday, the 22nd, two weeks from tomorrow.
You said 7:30?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Is 22nd good for everyone?
You know, I'm good with it.
Not for you? Okay.
That's a Tuesday?
Okay.
17th, yes.
Okay, let me get, let me get another day down to tomorrow. And maybe we, I mean, does Wednesday or the 23rd or 24th work without looking at my calendar? Yikes. None, none of those, that whole week?
I can make the 17th work, though. Was it no for one of you guys?
It's okay.
Mine's better than the 22nd.
Can make 17th work? Okay. Okay. We will plan for April 17th, which is a Thursday, at 7:30. And that is all I have.
Any questions, comments for Carrie? Just a reminder, her voice is leaving her, so. If not, a need to motion to approve?
I'll move.
Jeff moves.
Shall we?
30 seconds, and Carrie, when you are ready.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopkemeyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, Mr. Herman, your superintendent's educational report.
And I'm thankful, I think it was my throat last month that
Yes, absolutely.
we weren't doing so well, so I'm thankful that, to have mine back. Some of you may not be glad that it's back, but anyway. Since we have had the two presentations, and again, I cannot emphasize enough the work that goes into supporting not only our military families, but all families. And so, you know, that's something that I think the district takes pride in, is what we are able, the support that we're able to show to our students, families, community, and so forth. And some of the things, when you see the things that are happening, you know, it's absolutely amazing to know when you look at it as a, as a district as a whole, the things that are happening to give support to all of these students in these different areas. And so, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into that, and I'm very appreciative of all those individuals that helped make that happen and for all of you for supporting and allowing some of those things to happen. So appreciate that. We can move on. The first item we have is the overnight trips. That explains to you that we have a couple individuals that are going on different things through FCC LA. And then we have our volleyball team that's going to be traveling, it's this summer, to do, you know, different games and tournaments and leagues and so forth, camps. So we'll be seeing a lot of that as our, as our different sports teams begin to prepare for that and for their summer. The other ones are, we're very excited to have the individuals being able to go to leadership conferences and, and to be able to participate in, you know, national events, state events, and so forth, and to be able to build the skills and to be able to go and participate in those competitions and actually build their leadership skills through it. So that's what those are. Our educational agreements, I touched base with you to explain those. Those are to meet the individual needs of students that are on individualized education plans. And then that is just services that we're able to provide them. The calendar revision, I know that we introduced that last month and we are approving it this month. So then, as long as you do approve it over the, starting tomorrow, it'll be official for next year. We're very happy, we've heard a lot of positive comments about it, and being able to, you know, start school around the same time as we did, as what we had planned to, but then being able to end it before the end of May rather than going into June. I think that people are happy with that, and it does have us ending our semester at the winter break so that we're able to get those exams and stuff in before that time. So from what I, what's been shared with me, I think that people feel very positive about the calendar and I'm happy that we were able to work together to make those changes before next year, so. Before we know it, it'll be time to start working on the next one. The next item is, is Board Policies Update. You will notice those are the, last month, we went over several policies and made corrections to those and edited those. This is another group that we are working on in order to make sure that we are following law. As, as law changes, our policies need to change and so forth. And, and so that's what these typically are in response to. And so we have our policy committee that has met and discussed those. Do you have any comments, questions about the policies that we have in the first batch? We do have a second one that's pulled out separately.
I don't have anything major today, but there are also a couple changes in bylaws, right?
Yes.
Can you explain those?
Yeah. The bylaws that we have in the, is basically how the district is going to operate, okay? And it's, and the boards, it's the board bylaws for our operation. And, and one of the changes in the bylaws happens to be, for example, if there is just a grammatical change in a policy that needs to be done, I would have the right as the superintendent to be able to make that change without going to the board. Any type of changes that we're going to make to policies, I would go and talk with them about. But for example, one of the bylaws says if there's anything that's significant, and then it kind of defines a little bit what significant may be, more than just punctuation, grammar, that type of thing, then I would have to have board approval to do it. That's the way we're going to operate. The policies then that we have is basically putting those operations in place and how we are going to carry out the bylaws of the board. So we did have a couple changes in the bylaws, like I said, one being just basically what happens if there's an error in a policy that needs to be changed, what rights I would have, what rights I wouldn't in order to make that change. I feel very confident. I hope that the board feels very confident that there would, I would never take it upon myself to make anything significant without informing them. And as far as I'm concerned, even anything minimal would be something that we would discuss and, and I would share with them before, before they were made, so. And then again, the policies are how we carry out those bylaws.
Just to be clear, I'm not concerned by that. I'm sure your staff can vouch you overshare what you want. I'm sure your staff can vouch, you overshare what we want completely, so we're good there.
Yeah, and then actually, from the policies, we do have, from the policies, then we do have like administrative guidelines on, you know, like if we have some, a question with one of the policies, okay, here's how the guidelines for carrying out those types of things and so forth, so. Very detailed, and, but it's also something that we do try to operate and follow closely to, because that's what we've shared we will do.
Sure.
Yeah, and as always, anyone that is interested in the changes that we made, just email us and, and we can send you exactly what it is.
Okay.
You want to take a vote on that now?
Yeah, we're going to take a vote on that one, then.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve section four, items A through E at this time?
I'll motion to approve.
Lindsey, motions, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jeff will second. Carrie, when you are ready.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hapke-Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
On to item number F, or letter F.
And item number F is, is an additional policy. It's policy number 5223. It's for release time for religious instruction. We have had discussions on that policy and have shared back and forth through our policy committee and with the board, you know, different things that we believe should be included or should not be included. Basically what happens is we get recommendations from Niola, which is a company that helps us create policy, and then from that, we look at the different options that we have that will keep us within, you know, following the law, and then we determine, you know, how best to move forward and, and, you know, what our selection is. At times, we have differing opinions, which I've shared with you many times, is that those different perspectives, it helps us be a stronger board. And so, with this particular policy, we have had some discussion as far as what should be included in that. I think that the major question ends up being is, when you are looking at core curriculum, what does core curriculum actually mean? You know, it did, one of the options would be that it would include a graded course, anything that was graded would be core curriculum. Other times, you know, it leaves it to where we would help to have to establish what core curriculum is. So, at this time, we are recommending that it just basically state that they would be able to be released for religious instruction, but that it would not interfere with the core curriculum, and, and that's our policy. At this time, we'd like to share, anybody have any discussion on that, if they have comments or so forth on, on that particular policy? Yes?
I did want to explain to the community for this particular policy that I will not be voting a yes on this. We had gone round and round about this in a very thorough way. There is currently House Bill 96, which is down in Columbus, which one of the tenants for this budget bill will have new wording for this particular policy. So my thought was, right now, I believe it's a little premature to vote for this policy. There are statements that I would like to see further discussed, possibly in a work session, and, and I've talked to Kevin and Mike about this. Yes, core classes, of course, I'm concerned about that. The sentence that is going to be removed is that the board deems all graded courses our core curriculum, and that's going to be removed, and I think that's something that I can't support. I would like to, and as we have talked in the future, depending on what House Bill 96 hat, whatever, if it fails or if it passes, we may have to amend the policy again because that religious release time portion of the bill is different from what's already here. So my thought was, why can't we just wait and have a vote on this, change the wording one time only, rather than have to do it several times? So that's, I just wanted the community to know why I, I can't support this particular change in the policy right now.
Any other board comments? If not, I need a motion to approve item, letter F.
I will move to approve.
Mike moves, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lindsey seconds? Sorry, Shelley, I saw you had the last second.
That's okay.
Carrie, when you are ready.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hapke-Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
All right, with that, move on to item number five. Mr. Herman, your personnel recommendations.
All right. We have our resignations and retirements. I do want to share that we have Kelly Vogel, which is an intervention specialist at the high school, she is resigning from her position. That is to move closer to her home. She is, is a young teacher, and she's moving closer to where her, she has family, but she will be missed. She does an absolutely great job, she works with our special needs students and is an incredible teacher. I think one of the most difficult retirements for me tonight is Amy Anderson. Amy has worked as a junior high secretary, and then for the past few years, she's been at the CAO. She is an incredible individual. She is so supportive of this district and loves this district, and it's really difficult to see her go, so. But we wish her the absolute best. She is going to be a, well, she is a new grandma, and she's going to be doing some time with them, and, and she's going to be working with us for a little bit yet before she actually, her retirement begins. And so, we're excited for her to have this opportunity, but she will be missed greatly. And I know that she's going to miss the district as well. She has a lot of strong connections. She has loved, I believe, everybody that she's worked with, at least most, and she is a, just a positive person in this district, so. The next part is employment of, of individuals. Those are, you know, adding to like a bus route and so forth. We do have an intervention specialist that we are going to be moving into, we're losing actually two intervention specialists at the high school. Megan Rowan is going to be taking one of those positions. We are actually very excited because Kelly Vogel's position is, is a very difficult position to fill, but we believe that actually, we know she has the credentials, and I believe she's, that Megan's going to possibly, instead of the position that we hired her for, she may be going into Kelly's position because she actually debated on, debated on accepting our position because she was really wanting to work with students with like extreme, you know, much higher needs, and so that would be describing Kelly's position, Kylie's position, I'm sorry. And so I think she may be going into that, which then we'll have to hire another person for the position that we had originally hired her for.
She filled this one.
What's it? Yes.
Is that the name you're looking for, Erin?
Yeah, yeah, Erin, Erin left. But anyway, overall, we are very excited to have Megan, we're sad to see the others go, but that's kind of what happens in, in these years, and we will probably have others before the year's out, surprises like that, and so we're going to work very hard to get the best candidates. I will share with you that we had, you know, Angela Gardner, Jen Carl Thompson, Kevin Fefferley, Brad Contat, all working on hiring Megan, and I'll use what Angela stated, she said, "Megan has experience working with moderate to intense special education students. She interviewed well and received outstanding reference reviews." And I know when I met her, I was very impressed and instantly felt a connection with her also, and liked her true desire to help students, and so, again, a lot of work goes into getting those individuals hired, and we're thankful for those that helped do that. Finally, then, we just have like our substitute list. We have individuals that we are going to be helping in this area of sub-teaching, and then also in the classified areas. We also have a couple on there that'll be doing home instruction. When we have students that are on IEPs or special situations where they need to have some type of home instruction, we always are able to provide that to them. These individuals then would be working with them in person or virtually to meet their needs and requirements. Volunteers, we have those individuals that we are getting into the season of field trips, and so because of that, you will see the volunteer list growing over the next month or so, so that they can attend those with the students. We have our head coaches on the next part, all of our head coaches that are for supplemental positions. All of those individuals are members of our staff and have held the positions previously. The only difference would be our cheerleading coaches, we have Robin Buffy and Erica Black that will be taking over. Cindy Dalianis has decided to step down from varsity coaching and so forth after a lot of years. We thank her for all that she did for that program and the support that she, she owned that program, and we're excited to have Robin and Erica, they were her assistants this year, taking the program over. We have the limited supplemental contracts. Again, those are individuals that I shared with you before that are, they're also head coach positions, but they do not already have a position within the district, and so they are considered limited supplemental contracts rather than just supplemental contracts. And they have had those positions previously also, but they are going to continue as head coaches this coming year. And then finally, the contract amendments, those are just individuals that we've had to amend their contract due to them needing to be off and take a deduct for a day or something. Anything that adjusts their initial contracts is, has to be recognized by the board, so.
Any questions, comments for Mr. Herman on his report? If not, I need a motion to approve. Shelley moves, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lindsey seconds, thanks, guys. Carrie, when you're ready.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hapke-Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
All right, moves aside, number six, I don't believe anyone had any comments, was any board member have comments that they'd like to share today? Fantastic, that makes it easy. All right, move on to recognition of visitors. We have one, and it's been a while since I've called on this person, but Bill Tolsky. You have five minutes when Mr. Herman is ready.
Nope, you're all good.
Thanks once again for recognizing me and pronouncing my name correctly. Yeah, that's, that's great. I wasn't sure I was going to speak tonight, but I found it best that when I'm in doubt, speak. That sometimes gets me in trouble, but more often than not, I regret it when I don't speak my mind, so. This will only be a minute or two, so, and I know it's been a long night, so I'll just proceed. I saw on the board meeting agenda that Mr. Herman would be addressing the board policy on release time for religious instruction, but I didn't know anything about what would be discussed, whether anything would be voted on, it just said board policy and a number, which makes it hard for the public to know what to anticipate, or will he have a voice in any of this? But it's my understanding that Anthony Wayne currently has a policy that meets state requirements, and whatever he did tonight, I'm not sure what it achieved, but it's in line with what the state requires, okay? I'm also aware that the state is considering what language and provisions local school boards will have, that what language they must include, and they're considering what matters to leave up to the local school board to decide. What degrees of freedom do they have? So there's a lot going on, and to make a decision about a board policy tonight that will have to be probably revisited, that has ambiguous language, I just don't see the exercise here, what it accomplishes. So, you know, there's a process in which, before, when the policy came up, there was lots of input from the community, lots of discussions, lots of deliberations, lots of attention to the implications, and it was decided that release from recess and lunch would be okay for one particular religious provider, and it shouldn't be too disruptive. The door, the board policy now leaves the door open for release from actual classes, for any parent, for any religious group, for who knows what length of time, how often, and what disruptions will this cause to our school day beyond lunch and recess? What additional burdens will there be on teachers to provide makeup work? What implications will it have for the students missing their art class, their music class, their phys ed? What implications will it have for the students behind that don't go? There's a lot to consider. So I think if you feel you've accomplished something tonight, and the matter is a said and done, and, you know, never to be revisited, I think you're going to find, this policy is going to be challenged, it's going to be, there's going to be requests, there's going to be different ideas about what a core class is and isn't. So please, for the sake of the district and what's best for all stakeholders and to be least disruptive, please take this matter seriously and do, do what's in the best interest, and allow the community to have some input into this, because it affects all of us, every single one of us. So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate the work you've done. Thank you.
Who wants this? I will share, I will share with you, Bill, that in all situations, we, we, I, I think our process for looking at policy is actually more extensive than it is in a lot of places. I mean, we do go over each individual policy and look at it very carefully, and we do have discussions on it, we have had great discussions on it, and as you know, we've also had the community share thoughts on, on that particular policy. So I do want you to know that, just as you're saying about us taking it very seriously, we absolutely do. We recognize the importance of looking at the policies and making sure that the policies do, that they do fit the needs of our students and that they, you know, are in line with how we operate. So I appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us, as always, and, you know, and because of having strong discussion with it, that actually is why that particular policy was pulled out tonight, and because we had had discussions on it. And I do absolutely agree that we will continue to have additional information on that particular topic. I know that one of the suggestions that's being made is that it's only for one hour a week up to no, you know, and no more than two hours, and so forth. So yes, you are absolutely right, we will continue to do that, and when that does happen, we will continue to have conversations, because I think that that's what we try to do as a board, is to be able to take that information, look at it, look what our options are, and try to make the best decisions that we can for our students, so, appreciate that.
Well put.
I think that's it.
I believe so. With that, that leads to our meeting of adjournment. Would anybody like to move to adjourn? Shelley moves to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second.
She has seconds, Carrie, when you are ready.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hapke-Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for coming up. Great seeing you guys.
Thank you.